Good morning. Good evening. Sorry, creature of habit, I guess. It's five o'clock. I'll call our meeting to order. Looking for an approval of the agenda. We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the agenda. A second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Citizens to be heard. Is there anyone wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Gross.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. We have the minutes from November thirteenth presented.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Whalen to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Item number two is our budget timeline discussion. Steve Larsen.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioners, really all I have before you here today is we're getting down to the end of the year and we're just down to three board meetings. We have two Tuesday meetings on December eleventh and eighteenth, and then we have a scheduled meeting on a Thursday of December twenty-seventh. We have truth in taxation tonight, and I would assume that we'll be getting some feedback from our citizens, and so the eleventh may be a time where we'll just want to digest that feedback, but leaving it up to you and where you would be looking to finalize the 2019 budget.
Thank you. Discussion from the board.
Yeah, I think we should look at the eleventh if we're, depending on what we hear tonight.
Okay.
You know, if we wait too long, I'd start being concerned if we're canceled by weather, which shouldn't be, but because we have a deadline.
Any other discussion on that? I agree. I think just to, we'll obviously hear any concerns or input that we hear tonight. We can digest that and work with that, and I'd like to do it sooner rather than later.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. All right, our next item is committee reports. Commissioner Campbell.
We, all of us did attend the AMC conferences that started Sunday evening and went through The transportation meeting that I serve on Monday morning, that platform, there wasn't a lot of changes to the platform from the prior year. We did, there was some discussion about broadband again, and it was interesting to find out that the coalition that we decided to join to support the future needs and funding for broadband is now being endorsed by AMC, and the majority of the AMC counties have already also followed what we're doing and going in that direction. So by that, that coalition just gets bigger and stronger in terms of being able to work with the state legislature. I did not be able, I was not able to stay for that full meeting because I did leave that to call in to the special meeting of the diversion authority that was held at nine o'clock on Monday morning, so I called in on that, and there the report was on the updated costs of the project, and the updated costs, and you've probably all read by now, it's up to $2.75 million. Just to give you an idea, there's about, there still is about $2.3 million of that $2.75 that needs to be raised because we've spent the other four hundred and some million dollars already. And it is the, the plan right now is to go to the federal government for an additional $300 million, which Governor Hoben, or Senator Hoben said, and the Corps said they would look at, or being willing to amend the project partnership agreement to reflect that $300 million. And then another $300 million would come from the state of North Dakota, and they've had those discussions with Governor Burgum. And as far as the state of Minnesota goes, the original, the original price was asking for was $43 million, and that number is now going to $86 million. And most of, that extra $43 million is because of the addition, a lot of it is because of the additional work that needs to be done throughout the city of Moorhead because of the additional flows that the new plan going from 35 to 37 feet would do. So it's, you know, so the majority of the new money is going to deal with that, you know, that concession that was made while we're coming up with, during the task force with the governors. So that was primarily that, and we basically just, there was a motion made to approve the new price and to move forward with the, trying to obtain the additional funding. Then the, I was also going to try to make some other programs that were offered. We did have a medical thing that happened with one of our county people, and so I went over and spent some time at the emergency room there, so I was, I did miss out on some of the programming that was there, so I felt it important to, and everything turned out good. Let me finish by saying that, that's usually, everything's fine. Then Prairie Lakes Solid Waste, we had that meeting. Oh, that was the twenty-eighth. Yeah, that was the week before, actually. I don't have to report it. And then this morning, we had the Clay County Joint Powers Board meeting, and we, there was some additional discussion from the DGF Public Schools regarding road plans. There was some presentation by Superintendent Brian Tigerson and some handouts that he gave showing their, what they're looking at. We've heard some of that through our highway tracking, you know, but, and I think they're working with Dave and Eric from our highway department on a grant application that could help with that.
We have not had a meeting. The last meeting was the twenty-seventh, so if you want to report on the meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Oh, yeah, I thought I had to report on that meeting from Prairie Lakes. Yeah, so the Prairie Lakes meeting, again, we, that was in, we did, the budget is all doing fine. We're gonna, we're not, we're gonna certainly have revenues over expenditures, so we're not gonna be in the red like it had been in two years prior. We did come up with a, agreed upon price that each county will pay for tipping fees for 2019, and that is, I think I had reported that earlier, that's, it's at $123 a ton, and we were responsible for 8,400 tons minus the 6,000 that we trade for the fines. So our price for, our commitment percentage-wise for 2019 is about $286,000. In prior years, we were paying, I think upwards of around $340,000, so it's still down, so. That, oh, then back to the intergovernmental retreat. We did review the final document for the intergovernmental retreat and the agenda, and that's going to now be mailed out, so you'll be receiving that very shortly. And we did talk about topics for, starting up in January, which the new host in January will be the city of Moorhead, which will take over for the prior year, which was more public schools. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Heaney.
Thank you. On Sunday through Tuesday, I attended the AMC conference on leadership down in Twin Cities along with the other commissioners, and I attended the policy meeting for the Health and Human Services Committee, and we approved the platform items, especially in regards to support of keeping the 2% provider tax that's due to sunset in 2019, and we all voted unanimously to endorse the idea of keeping that 2% provider tax in place, and it would forward it then from the general meeting, which will go to the legislature. On Wednesday, I attended the city of Moorhead planning, and let's see, I've got a report We had a public hearing request for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a 1,600 square foot garage at 1812 56th Avenue North. It passed unanimously, and we also passed the resolution for the five-year capital improvement plan in the city of Moorhead, which we had the other day, a week ago, from Mr. Moore. Then this morning, I also attended the Moorhead, or the Clay County Joint Powers meeting, and as Commissioner Campbell discussed, we discussed the upcoming Clay County retreat, the Dilworth-Glynn and Felton expansion, and issues with Superintendent Tigerson, and then we also received an update on the 2021 First Street underpass from City of Moorhead manager Chris Volkers. And then this afternoon, I had just attended the Clay County Collaborative Governance Board meeting, and we heard about the results of the 2018 budget, and we had a report about the truancy program in the county, and there was speculation by some of the board members that video game playing is a significant factor in this situation where kids just don't want to go to school. Parents go to work, and the kid gets on the video game and stays home. And there was a long discussion about that. And then we also had a request from the Minnesota Department of Human Services. They have requested changes to the governance agreement for all collaborative statewide, and we're having difficulties in getting approval signatures from all the member stakeholders prior to the January 2019 deadline for this. And the collaborative handbook is a work in progress, and in the February meeting, we will hope to finish planning for 2019. That's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
Wednesday, I attended Historical Society. Got a bit of stuff going on there. We're talking about salary scales, just like we did, looking at here, compensation and different things, comparing it to other societies. There are a lot of discussion on rental increase there. Also, as far as the Historical Society, they reported that it's one of the most visited sites in the city of Moorhead, so, so good, good things there for the Historical Society. And from there on, I guess we attended, I was down at AMC meeting there too, and Sunday night, I attended the Minnesota Rural Counties meeting. There again, I think the priorities there are still pretty much the same, transportation, broadband, buffer strips, so I don't think their, their priorities have changed much over the years, that I found out. I think they're gonna just continue working on that. Monday morning, I attended a session on chairman of government, and some of our priorities there, of course, was housing and mortgage registration, but the one that really interested me was that I think we may have to begin of all was county boundary mapping, the counties that are bordered by a river, like La Sure County. I mean, they're, they're losing some of their county to the other bordering county, and that's just why, I mean, I'm looking at the Red River, is it changing the channels at all? You know, does some of our descriptions have to be revisited, and, because we may be, oh, we may be gaining territory, I don't know. You know, depends on those channels are doing, you know, and down in La Sure County, there's quite a bit of discrepancies now.
That's a big issue with La Sure, and I think it was Nicolette, that some landowners were actually being transferred to other counties, correct?
Yeah.
Because we talked at our policy meeting as well.
Well, if we use the diversion channel, we pick up Fargo down in West Fargo, West Park.
You could change their name to West Moorhead.
Part of Minnesota, so, yeah. So, it's a river, you know, if the river's a boundary, the river goes that way, so, at least temporarily.
Nice try.
Yeah.
So you guys on the diversion, you got a big job at it, you know, you gotta get some more territory. Off of there, a little discussion, let's see, motivational speaker, I guess Matt Jones. I don't know if you guys got to pick up his book or not. I brought some books along back because I knew you guys had to leave with.
Thank you, Frank.
With Kirk there for a while and stuff, so I read the book, and it includes everything that he was talking about except his laughs, it wasn't, you gotta, you had to have been there to enjoy that. Some other, I attended the veterans program thing, and I think we're very involved in that here, so I think we're way out ahead in that program, as far as what they were talking about. Another one I went to was healthcare and retirement, and that was pretty much meant for, I don't know if it had much to do with county, he was talking about Medicare mostly and stuff. It was interesting, I mean, it was an interesting discussion, but it had pretty much to do with, if you plan on retiring, what should you do with your Medicare and stuff like that. Next thing, I attended a session on housing, and I don't know, my feeling on the house, they say there's a big housing shortage, and I think there is housing shortages, but the problem is, like I discussed before, we've got plenty of houses, it's just that senior citizens are living in them. You know, how many people are, I can just go my own neighborhood, you know, we've got three, four bedroom houses in our neighborhood, and there's one person that's living in four of them, you know, so it's just, the housing is there, it's just that we, we got the wrong people, not the wrong people. That was a bad one. Strike that, whatever. No, I mean, we've got senior citizens living in a three, four bedroom housing, you know.
Transition.
Yeah, and they're not, and there's nothing wrong with them, but the housing is there, but it's just, they have a problem with the right people living there. Okay, and those were pretty much my report.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, Commissioner Gross, the, you know, I think the, I think maybe why they had that Medicare program on there too, kind of coincided with the other speaker that we had, which was a demographer, that talked about the aging populations that we have going on, and the number of baby boomers that are, although that was dealing more with workforce, it still is going to be a critical concern to counties because we're going to have more and more people that are going to be going off of income and onto services. And I think they were talking about the potential for nursing home services and things of that nature that could become critical. But I, you know, I think even though it was probably meant for our aging county commissioners to go to those classes for themselves, but it also, I think, is important for all of us to understand how all of that works so that, you know, if we run into some of our constituents who are in the same boat, we can maybe help direct them into getting good answers.
No, I think it was very important because being involved in human resources throughout my life, it just, it was good information.
Yeah, I know you do that from the federal standpoint.
Yeah, so it's just, it's a big decision whether to go on Medicare or not and stuff like that, so it's, it was good information.
Thank you. Commissioner Whalen.
Okay, let's see, I also, I attended the MRC meeting on Sunday night and franked over that. Yeah, a lot of the legislative issues are the same as they've been for a couple of years, but that's mainly because there hasn't been any movement by the legislature on trying to accomplish them, so they're still plugging away, trying to get, you know, the transportation, which will probably always be on there, that's always going to be an issue for rural counties and the broadband funding and funding for buffer strip compensation, things like that, so. I went to the Public Safety Committee meeting, which I am assigned to, and that was, they had updates by the County Attorneys Association and by the Sheriff's Association and by the Department of Corrections, and at the meeting, the Commissioner of Corrections gave us a shout out for our project up here, and so he apologized for not being here at the opening himself, but I told him we fully understood why he couldn't be here based on what they had going on in the Department of Corrections at the time. I also, I attended the, the health seminar, the Medicaid seminar also. The one thing the guy did bring up, though frank, that I thought was interesting was that one county commissioner said their, their plan, they're able now to have people that are on Medicare, Medicare eligible, where the county pays the supplement rather, you know, and he said it's saving, you know, counties that are doing that a lot of money, and so there's a few here on our board that are eligible for Medicare, so, yeah.
Yeah, that.
I think it'd be worth checking out for us to see if there's any possibilities, you know, with our plan of something like that happening, so, because it's certainly way less expensive to provide that than it is health insurance for people, so. Let's see, I attended the MCIT annual meeting, I was their representative there, and everything is going well with MCIT, so I think that was it for me.
Okay, thank you. Last week, I attended a meeting with Lakes and Pires Executive Director in regards to some HR staffing issues. I attended Sunday through Tuesday the AMC conference. I just really appreciate the opportunity for all of us to attend that. The networking that we're able to do on the statewide platform is important, and it's really helpful to voice our concerns for legislative priorities, and that's something that I'm grateful for, the opportunity to do that, so thank you. I attended the AMC Extension and Research Committee meeting on Monday morning, gave good updates throughout the state on what's going on with extension statewide. I voiced our appreciation for the hosting of the regional site, that's one of only a handful of offices statewide, and I'm appreciative of having that in Moorhead, that's a big thing. And I was also appointed to that committee, so I'll now serve on the AMC committee. If we want to add that to my portfolio, that'd be great.
Yeah, I would, I would move, that's a good thing first, that's a man, I would move that Commissioner Moore should be added.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Campbell makes a motion. Commissioner Whalen seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried, thank you very much. I also serve on the Environment and Natural Resources Policy Platform Committee. We had great discussion on several different proposals for our legislative priorities. As in years past, the, it is similar in terms of buffer strips and noxious weed, support for, for counties, the aquatic invasive species was another priority. One policy platform that we did not support was the solid waste management tax, which was one that talked about completely striking that, that tax statewide. That died for any support on our committee, and I believe that was possibly looked at at the General Government Committee as well, and so that was one that, that was not brought forward. I attended good breakout sessions in regards to recruiting of foster families and how we, we negotiate, or not negotiate, we just deal with the fact that there are shortages of foster families statewide, so good, good discussion. I don't think there's an easy answer to finding those. It's important to continue to recruit good people for those, those people as well. And then also a workshop on success through resource realignment. I think interesting as we continue to look at how our departments can be the most effective and efficient ways to look critically at if there's any way to combine certain committees or not, so that concludes that. And also this, I do want to say that I continue to find value in that state demographer. I think that we can look at how to better serve citizens because of those results. I had good questions in regards to when we'll get census information and how we can look at that too, and how that could possibly determine any redistricting, so that was a good, good piece. Yesterday, I had the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting, just the general discussion that we have every month in terms of how, how our work programs will look going forward and continuing to network and have input from not only the policymakers but also the staff on the ground to collaborate projects. This morning, I had, or this afternoon, a phone call and conference call on the detox grant. We will get that overnighted Monday night, so this board can have the update on that on Tuesday for the deadline next week. We are now pretty much finalized in terms of what, what the plan is for that, we're just finishing up the estimate from Ben from Construction Engineers. It is a large, larger project, we understood that going into it, but the thing of note is that we needed to get a plan solid for the application. If we do get awarded the grant, the, there can be tweaks to save money, but we do, we just needed to get a plan, and so that's where we're at. The appreciation that I have for Klein-McCarthy and Construction Engineers, especially our staff for getting that together in such a short amount of time, I think the briefing document was well over a hundred, 100 pages.
149 pages.
But it's a $5 million grant, so hopefully we can get that successfully. And then I also, our county engineer asked for a letter of support for me to sign to send to Washington DC, Director Cho, I believe, in regards to possible bridge grants, and he will bring that to this board, because I, or copy this to that board, because this board, I wanted you to know that. But I think a good opportunity to seek out grant funding, and if we're awarded, then we can talk about where, where money would be, but wanted to get that done, so. That concludes my reports. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Tuesday after board, I attended a meeting with Kevin Kastenberg and his staff, and Eric Holby from the Assistant County Engineer, in regards to funding mechanism to ensure that the grant dollars that the soil and water has been receiving the last couple of years from the state, it is available to us and looking to leverage that, that money from his, from Highway Bridge to get additional funding. I think we have a good plan moving forward for 2019. Later afternoon, I attended a meeting with Commissioner Campbell and Whalen in regards to that diversion. On the 28th, we met with Lori Johnson in preparation for TNT this evening. The 28th, or excuse me, 29th, we met with Tim Denton, Mark Sloan, and Joe Olson. I think one of the challenges that we're finding, not just here at the courthouse, but also, also in the family service center, Tim Denton, Mark Sloan came forward to run out of space for their staff. And so they had put a number of different plans, we had some different discussions there, and I talked with Madam Chair, and I was just wondering if this would be something that we might want to consider bringing the Campus Improvement Committee back.
I'm sorry, I did forget to report on that. I think that from our discussions, that it would be worthwhile in having that committee, I believe Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Haney are on that, to discuss. We have added staff there, and, you know, there is some open space on this, this top floor that we may be able to work with, but I think that that would be worthwhile.
On the 11th, or excuse me, the 29th, and also on the 5th, I met with Sheriff Burquist, Sheriff-elect MT, and Chief Deputy Lanson, and working on the sheriff's transition plan. The sheriff, Sheriff-elect will be taking the oath with, with Commissioner Moore, Joe, and Commissioner Campbell in the third, and so they also wanted to invite you on the 8th, they were going to be swearing in all of the, all of the deputies and all of the new promotions over at the law enforcement center, and so that's, that, right now, it starts at nine, so we're at board. I'm. Right now it starts at nine, so we're at board, and so I don't know if that's something we would want to consider.
I think we should, Madam Chair, I think we should, and we either take a recess or that we just start late.
Yeah, I believe we should definitely do that to make that. The one question I had, I know in the past we've done oaths of office up here, in terms of spacing, would it be worthwhile having our oaths on the 3rd in a courtroom because of the new sheriff doing oath as well?
Is that on the 11th?
On the 8th.
It takes like 10 seconds.
I don't know, if nobody else wants it, let's go.
I'll, I can, let me know what Judge Lawson, who's going to do the oath on the 3rd, so I can just let her know.
Okay, I'll do it here.
And I also attended the Minnesota Rural Counties Meeting, that's been covered in detail. We did have Dr. Kerry Henry Smith from the University of Minnesota Rural Healthcare Research Center, talking about some of the projects that they're looking at and trying to make sure that services in the rural communities are quality care. And they also, again, talked about the legislative priorities. On the 3rd, I participated in the Health and Human Service Policy Group with Commissioner Haney. He discussed or addressed the 11th platform proposals that they brought forward. Also attended the keynote speaker and the AMC Business Plan, Business Meeting, and I also had multiple discussions with Scott Fettig and Matthew Keenan from Clayne McCarthy about our various projects. On the 4th, that afternoon, I met with Darren on a number of HR issues and had some more detailed conversation about the market study. In talking with Darren, I believe that our PIC will be having a meeting scheduled for next week, on next Tuesday, and he'll be having some recommendations, I believe, at that point. This morning we met with Joint Powers, that's been covered, and we had county management here. Again, met with Darren on some human resources and was in on the conference call with Commissioner Moser. So, those are my meetings, I just did have a couple of different things to cover. We did sales tax refunds, we did get, we made the determination that we were going to cut off the sales tax in different portions, once we completed Phase 1 of the jail, our corrections facility, that we would submit some, our sales tax form. Based on the feedback, we've just beginning just over $555,000. I think in the planning, that's a little bit lower than what we projected, but we will be, there'll be some additional sales tax that we will give with Phase 2, and so that'll be a better idea, once that portion of the project is completed.
Does that include the mortgage?
I would have to look for sure if that included, but there's about three pages on there, I can take a look.
I'd like to see that.
Sure, absolutely. The other thing, I know we've talked a great deal about our legal service contract, the board has worked with, when we were notified by the City of Moorhead, that they were choosing to not move forward with us as far as a three-year contract. We made adjustments, we asked Pam Foss, Acting County Attorney, to make adjustments in her budget and staffing plan to meet those needs. On the 27th of November, a letter was emailed to Commissioner Moser, Pam Foss, and myself from City Manager Chris Wilkers. In that letter, she was requesting our willingness to reopen negotiations, and this has been the first opportunity we met as a board, and I thought, I think that we, you've been very clear and direct in how you would like to proceed, it was asked, and so I just thought from a discussion standpoint, we may want to address this at the meeting.
Commissioner Whalen.
I think that, you know, this thing is, as far as, at least from my perspective, it was resolved based on the information provided by the city manager of the City of Moorhead, that they were no longer interested in having the agreement that we've had for 16 or 18 years. And so, and I've had some contact with, you know, with some of the city council members and representatives of the city, and, you know, like I told them, as far as we were concerned, it was done and resolved, and so at this point, at least my position is, is that they'd have to, you know, resolve this through the county attorney's office, they're the ones that do the work, they would have to agree to that, and so, you know, that's where I think the, you know, if anything further would be done with it, it has to come through the county attorney's office, as far as I'm concerned, so.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, I agree that at this point, it's, it would be imperative that if there's going to be anything in the future, that the first group of people they have to get on board is county attorneys. And I would certainly, I would certainly not be in favor of any discussion of a one-year contract. A one-year contract, that, we have staff commitments we have to make, and we can't be making staff commitments based on one-year contracts where we could, after one year, then end up having to let employees go, or attorneys go, and I just don't think that's good planning on our part. So if it were to be done, I want to be on record as saying that it needs to be something certainly longer than a one-year, I would think it would have to be in the area of a three-year probably minimum in my estimation that we should be looking at to, because obviously through our PIC committee, we've talked about this too. And in our PIC committee, you know, we kind of made a commitment to our county attorneys and their staff that, you know, if there's additional work, that we need to provide them with the additional, you know, employer, employment to handle that additional work. And we're not going to do that on a, hiring on a one-year basis, so.
Well, and that's all the reasons we're at this point, and because the word negotiation kept coming up, and, you know, like I said, there's been an arrangement with the City of Moorhead and the county for at least 16 or more years, and the service has been provided at cost, and so, you know, like we had tried to indicate, there isn't anything to negotiate unless the county would be willing to negotiate less than what it cost us to provide the service, and I don't think anybody was willing to do that, and so, which wouldn't make any sense for our constituents, and so, you know, that's why we're at where we're at, so.
Commissioner Gross.
The one concern I have is, you know, we keep on talking with the contract with Moorhead, you know, and I think the thing that we have to be concerned about is there's some other people involved in this, and that's still what Barnes, Wood, and Hall, you know. They seem to be left out of the loop on this thing, and we can say, well, your contract is with Moorhead, you know, but it's still, they're part of the county, and I don't know whether we can.
Well, you know, and in response to that, Frank, when we had the meeting with the small cities, I mean, we emphasized that we were more than willing to work with the smaller communities to continue the service. And at least according to the information we received back from the city, that they had, the smaller communities indicated that the city manager of Moorhead was representing their interest, and so, and she told us they were discontinuing their services, so. So, we, you know, we tried, well before we got to this point, you know, to come out, come to an agreement with the smaller communities, and I'm not sure that we, you know, that, like I say, that's another issue for the county attorney's office to resolve if they're interested in that, but I think we tried and tried and tried to get this resolved, so.
Commissioner Campbell.
In the, in regards to the other, the smaller cities that were part of a contract through Moorhead with Clay County, that's how that worked, we did, in our PIC committee, we did talk with Pam, and I know Steve was also present there, and when we were trying to reformulate the budget, and they did an awful lot of work on redoing that, based on there being no Moorhead anymore involved in it, but one of the things that we certainly talked about leaving the door open to, because that was a much smaller number, and quite a bit less in terms of work on the part of the smaller communities, that, just like we had, Commissioner Whalen, what you said, that we talked to the small cities about months ago at that meeting, that, you know, we would probably be able to work that out and have them continue. You know, we talked about that in the PIC meeting. So I, but I just want to go back on this deal, and I, you know, and again, I'm going to say the same thing I said the last couple of times, I'm really disappointed in this whole, in this whole process, because, again, all of our constituents look at us for the purpose of collaborating where we can. And this was a case where, and I think Commissioner Whalen, back when you were police chief, I think you were probably involved with getting Moorhead to come in to, with our county attorneys and providing that service. And it seems to be flying in the face of what we really want to do with what's transpired here, but I, as a commissioner, I'm not going to support doing something that we're asking our staff to do, that we can't get compensated just on the basics, and that's all we've asked on this deal. You know, and, you know, our county attorney, we asked them to supply what were the costs associated with the service that we knew what to go in with, and we got that, and so there we go.
I do want to comment on some of this, because as chair, I've been in negoti, I don't want to say negotiation, but in discussion with this, along with our Vice Chair, Commissioner Whalen, and part of our hope was that by sending a letter at the beginning of August, we could alleviate the pain in budgeting that this has caused. And because of the fact that a contract was not actively being worked out, it was something that we had had to address. We had to address the fact that there was not a contract in for the cost of what it was costing the entire county to provide that service. Our hope was that by sending that letter, we could have discussion with our county attorney before he was deployed to the Middle East, and I think we gave a timeline that would have allowed for those discussions to happen. It is unfortunate that it wasn't addressed until the 11th hour, and in regards to the discussion with the smaller cities, I am upset that that played out the way it was. The letter, the meeting with the smaller cities never even happened until after we granted an extension in October to the November date, and they should have been at the table long before, but the message that was portrayed to them in January of this year was that the contract was very close to being settled, and so you have to be very careful who you choose to speak on your behalf, and unfortunately for the smaller cities, that was the city manager in Moorhead, and she acted on their behalf. Whether that's what their city councils wanted, that's who represented them, and I want on record to be known that we worked very closely with the county attorney's office in terms of what that cost was, not only with the acting county attorney, but with the county attorney himself, as he's on deployment, as I said. And we reported on this, I think we've reported on this issue almost every week since September, and so you can, people can go back into our meetings, and this has been reported on, this is something that has been very transparent from the county's perspective, and if it is something that the county attorney's office thinks that they would like to work on, I am open to in January, opening the door to discussing any future collaboration if it were to happen. But unfortunately for fiscal year 2019, that door has come and gone, and so I will recognize the fact that we got an additional letter from the City of Moorhead, but I believe we were very clear in our, in our process leading up to that, and I think this board's wishes are in collaboration with the county attorney's office's wishes, and that's just where we're at. Anything else? Okay. Steve, do you have?
That concludes my report.
I do have, Commissioner Moser, you had mentioned something about, you brought up foster families, and it reminded me of something that I just want to request, Stephen, if you could arrange a meeting, I have spoken with a couple of volunteer drivers that have some issues, and I, if you would, I'd like you to set up a meeting with yourself and myself, and Rhonda Porter, and whoever's in charge of the volunteer driver program that we have. I want to work on some things before we end up not having any more volunteer drivers.
Okay.
And then in addition to that, I just wanted to mention that we, Steve mentioned that we did have a, on the 28th, I believe it was, we did have that diversion meeting with the, the 27th, I think, I guess it was, after our board meeting, we did have a Minnesota entities meeting of the diversion authority, which we were, we were kind of getting some preliminary numbers on what I discussed at, for the special diversion meeting that took place on the 3rd. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, we will be adjourned until our, oh, recess, until our meeting at 6:00 for Truth and Taxation. Okay, it's 6:00 o'clock, I'll call our meeting back to order. Good evening, thank you to those of you that are here. We will begin our Truth and Taxation meeting to discuss the 2019 budget and the proposed property tax. We'll open it up for public comments and questions later, but Stephen Marson, our county administrator, will open it up to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I would, just for our citizens, when you came in, there was a packet here, it's the fact that you were, you know, and also if you plan to speak, or during the process you'd like to speak, there's a place that we'd ask you to sign, and also when you come to the podium, if you introduce yourself. All right, thank you, Madam Chair. The first page of our packet, again, I think is the crux of it, why we're here tonight. It deals with our tax levy that we're requesting, this dollar amount, $32,695,921 in collection from our citizens. As you can see, it's broken down into five different categories, road and bridge, building improvements, social services, debt retirement, and revenues. Our auditor, treasurer, Lori Johnson, takes the funding that we received through the taxation and splits them into the variety of departments that they're required to go to. The fund revenue covers a variety of different departments, and so that is our main revenues. On page two, we look at our Clay County expenditures. Right now we are projecting $89,730,884. That's a pretty significant difference if you look in from our revenues that we're collecting of 89, of 32 million, we have, we have a little bit of gap there, and I think it's important for our citizens to understand that as a county, we're really an arm of the state, and so we act through a pass-through, a lot of, through our mandates, social services is a good example, mandates that we receive funding from both state and federal government, and that looks to balance, balance the budget between the $89 million and our levy dollars in front of you. Again, this breaks it down, we're going to be going through later, later in the packet, that breaks down each of our departments, but this gives you a, gives you an idea of where those expenditures fall. On page three, we have a kind of a historical view of our tax levy system. Right here, we have 29 different years listed, listed out. When you take all of these different years and you add them up, we get, we get an average of 5.86. That's what our 28-year average has been, and so this year, the tax levy that we are projecting is 5.14%, and so we are in that range of where we've been for about the last 28 years. And I think it's also important, from our citizens' perspective, to understand, we aren't always fortunate in every year to have new construction growth, but this year we do have a projected 1.5% of growth in our. Uh, but this year, uh, we do have a projected 1.5% uh, of, of growth, uh, in our county, uh, which takes that 5.14% down to 3.64%. Uh, and that is, uh, that 3.6.4% is where our preliminary was, uh, set and approved, uh, back in September. I think the other thing that, that's key, uh, in, in looking at the, the history of the percentages from our board's perspective, um, and our citizens, I think is, is important for our citizens, is the consistency of, 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 of what this board has provided. Uh, from the standpoint that, um, a lot of times in the good years, it's, a bunch of times can be a little bit easy in those challenging years. Sometimes there can be, uh, a desire to, to go flat or, or to, uh, give smaller increases. And oftentimes what we see is, uh, at some point there's going to be a bounce back. And so, I think this board deserves a great deal of credit. When you look at, uh, the last 10 to 12 years especially, uh, there's, there's not a whole lot of fluctuation at all. And, and I think that, uh, is certainly a benefit, uh, a benefit to our taxpayers. The bottom portion of that, uh, in, in the proposed levy, uh, the, the information that there is, is the information that was on slide, slide number one. The next page, uh, gives us a, a budget history going back to 2015, uh, up to 2000, the proposed budget for 2019. Again, if we take a look at just for, for, uh, for citizens, on the left side here in the top corner, we have our revenues. Um, again, we talked about is the pass through, it's not just our tax dollars that, that we're levying, but also the different licensing permits, uh, governmental aid that we receive. All of those different revenues for Clay County add up to 86,000, uh, or excuse me, 86 million, 915,000, 509 dollars. Uh, when you look down into the different expenses, again, we'll have a, a more detailed breakdown in, in our departments as we go forward. But the expenses there, uh, that we have total projected, again, is that 89 million, 730,000, uh, 884 dollars that we spoke on page two. Uh, now again, from a business perspective, if you look, that we're bringing in 86, just under 87 million dollars and we're, we're spending, uh, 89 million dollars. Uh, you do that for a very long time and you're going to have some different issues. Uh, but I think one of the things that, that's important for our citizens to understand, uh, that many of our departments have scheduled items that they're paying for, uh, and planning for. And so, uh, the best example that we have in 2019 is our, our solid waste department is, uh, is moving forward in 2019 with a new cell out at the landfill. Now landfill, it's going to cost a little over 2 million dollars. And so, uh, i- if you take that example and just take that 2 million dollars, uh, out of that 89, uh, we're, we're getting much closer. And there's other examples, uh, in each of those departments that, that get us to that balanced budget.
If I can, I reject there. You know, I think it, when you see that, we're not necessarily, we're not overspending. It's, we're, we're using money that's from reserves.
We're, we're pre-planning.
Well, but, you know, for example, the, the, the dollars that are, uh, being talked about for the new cell, they're dollars that were sitting there that we've saved.
Correct, that's correct.
So, so we're not deficit spending.
Correct.
Just says we are, but we're not.
Yeah.
Because, because it doesn't show that we're taking it from reserves.
Yes. Thank you.
Continue, thank you.
Yeah, does anybody have any other questions or comments on, on the budget history? Um, page five and six, uh, we have three columns, we break it down, and the first column is, uh, is our different departments and, and, uh, funds that, areas that funds are appropriated to. Uh, then the next portion, the next line is the 2019 budgeted expenditures, uh, and the, the change that we're looking at. Now, I'm, I'm not planning to go through, uh, each individual one of these lines. Uh, we've gone through with the, with, uh, with the auditor treasurer, Lori Johnson, myself, and then we brought this budget to you this, this past, uh, September and October. And many of the department heads came and spoke to you. I think, for example, just to touch on a couple of different examples, we have, uh, we have technology services is up 12%. We had a, we had, in that case, we, we had some staffing increases based on the needs that we have here at the county with our additional buildings. We also, if you take a look below that in information systems, we had one of those staff from in, information systems transfer, uh, into technology services. And so, uh, that, there is an offset there. Planning and zoning, it has a 29% increase. That looks pretty huge probably to, to the general public. Uh, prior to that, we were, we were a two-person department and, and the board did, through, through conversation, felt that it was important that we had, uh, a di- and one additional person to make sure that we were meeting the needs of our citizens. And so, uh, again, I'm not looking to go through all of those, uh, any of those things, but if there are any different questions that people have uh, on this budget, um, the budget breakdowns, I certainly would be, be willing to answer those things.
Let's touch on juvenile detention because that is another larger one.
Juvenile detention, uh, it is a, is a big difference, uh, a difference from last year. Uh, one of the things that we're entering into in, in 2020 is the juvenile facility. Uh, the secure portion is a regional facility, serves 10 counties, uh, 10 counties in Minnesota and Cass County of North Dakota. Uh, in 2000, in 2020, uh, our cooperative service agreement entered into a, a 20-year contract, um, which, uh, rather than bet purchasing plans and which we've done in the past, counties are, are agreeing to pay a portion of the overall budget. Uh, and so, I, in, in looking at, uh, the, the change that happened, um, the impact, uh, to, to the budget was, was that, uh, increase. And so that was, uh, that, that brought about the 25% increase. Again, part, the other part of that is, is based on the demand that, that we're seeing in our, in our area in Clay County. We're, we're having a higher demand for the needs of, of our, our youth, so. Any other questions? Okay. Um, if, if we could turn that, would be the two pages, uh, to, to page eight for, uh, for citizens, we're looking at, uh, this one with the red heading. Um, with the, it has a real estate tax projections and comparisons. Uh, and I think, uh, just to, to, to make sure, what this does is it breaks down the market value according, uh, to the value of 150,000, 200,000, uh, 250,000 and, and 415,000. Uh, it ends at 415,000 because that's where the market value credit, uh, ends. And so, what, what we have a breakdown here for our citizens is looking at, uh, both the, the county, the school, uh, the city and the township, uh, the EDA and the watershed, watershed, uh, watershed, uh, budgets. And so, if we look at these, we can break these down, uh, the Clay County proposed budget. I think historically as a board, we've looked at the 150,000 dollar value property. Uh, with the county alone, uh, the impact of, of the budget of a 2.2, uh, 2.24 increase would be 13 dollars and 32 cents per year, uh, per, for the citizen of Clay County. Uh, again, I should be clear that, uh, that thi- these projections are based on the city of Morehead. Uh, Lori's office, uh, does have the ability to break it down, uh, for any of our cities in, in the Clay County, but, uh, we've historically used Morehead. Uh, the school this year, uh, based on their budget, uh, they actually had a, had a reduction of 26 dollars and 55 cents, or 3.92%. Uh, the city, uh, or your township, uh, had an increase of 19.6, or excuse me, 19 dollars and 62 cents, um, per year. The EDA had a, had an 80 cent increase and the watershed actually had a decrease. And so, the net increase, uh, based on those five different, uh, different areas, comes out on 150,000 dollar property at 6 dollars and 84 cents. Now, the important part for the citizens to realize is that, that 150,000 dollar value, we're trying to compare apples to apples, right? And so, we're assuming that that 150,000 dollar property from 2018 did not increase any evaluation. And we know based on how our, how things have worked here from a market value standpoint, um, we, we have seen an increase, or we generally see an increase in the market value of our homes. And so, but if we looked apples to apples from year to year, uh, the Clay County citizen is going to pay uh, an additional 6.6 dollars and 84 cents, um, per year. And again, if you, uh, if I was clear in explaining that, you can then take a look down the line for both 200,000, 250 and 415,000 dollars.
Question?
All right, now, we can flip the page. The next, the next, uh, portion that, uh, we would like to cover is a summary of estimated market values and tax capacities. Uh, the focus is going to be on the top, top portion of that. Uh, the columns are, where we're going to focus on are tillable land, uh, market values and residential land, uh, market values. Historically, these, these two different areas in, in our market values make up about 79 to 81% uh, of the total value. The other portion of that comes from commercial, uh, but commercial is not, is not addressed in, on this, on this piece of pa- piece of paper. Uh, the important thing that we look, if we look back to 2014, um, uh, we look at our percentages. Uh, tillable land was at about 18.9%. Uh, the, the residential, uh, was about 59.6%, which again, shows that a lot of the, the, the burden of the tax was falling more on the residential. Uh, we saw some increases, a pretty steady increase with the culmination of tillable land into 2014. Uh, and that shift happened, the shift went, that more, more of the tax, tax costs, uh, were going to that tillable land. Uh, we've, we've, we began to see a decrease over the year, of the years since 2014, and some of that shift is falling, falling back onto the residential. And so, um, we tend to see that fluctuation from year to year. This past year, uh, we saw, uh, we saw tillable land drop another, uh, point one, 1.4% and, and about 0.5% of that was, was passed on to the residential land. Does anybody have any questions there? I just have one more, one more, um, sheet of paper here, and this is more for informational purposes. Uh, again, I think that, that, um, this time of year, any type of, any type of, uh, tax increase that we're looking at is certainly not appreciated. Uh, but I think one, one of the things that's important in this last form, this, this last form comes from the state auditor. Um, this data is from 2016, it's the most current data that we have. In the state of Minnesota, uh, there's, there are 87 counties. And I have, I've highlighted three areas that I just wanted to touch on for, for our citizens. Uh, and I think in the due diligence and, and the, the stewardship that our board, uh, provides with their tax dollars. And the first one is the net, net tax levy. Um, we are per capita, uh, the 77th out of 87 counties, uh, in tax levy. And so,
77.
77.
Lowest or highest?
Uh, the lowest.
There you go. Per capita.
Per capita.
Yes.
Yeah, so, uh, so that's important. The other thing is, is that I have highlighted are the charges for services that we, that we do here at the county. Uh, and again, we are 87 of 87, again, the, the lowest, uh, in the state of Minnesota. And, and also expenditures, I think, uh, the, the bottom piece, uh, again, as we've kind of touched on, uh, this board holds our department heads a great deal of accountability in our expenditures. Uh, and, and looking at that, uh, we rank 78th out of 87 counties. And so again, a- as I mentioned, we do not necessarily like our, for our citizens' perspective, to have tax increases, but, but I think what this shows is the due diligence of this board to keep the taxes, tax levy as low as we can each year. Any questions? Uh, I wouldn't, wouldn't like to note, just for the record, uh, we did have a, an individual resident, uh, uh, provide a, a letter for, for truth and taxation. It did not focus on the budget, it did focus on, on a concern about an increase in their taxes and I, I want this,
Increase in the valuation.
Yes, thank you. Uh, and, and so I will reach out to this, this resident, just to let him know.
Okay, Commissioner Campbell.
Can, can we just talk a little bit about what, so this meeting isn't about valuations.
Correct.
This meeting is about how we spend money and come to a tax levy. I think that's important. People come here to talk about, uh, why their values, when a, when, when, when is the appropriate time for them to address that?
When the tax comes, tax, tax statements come out in March.
Yep.
And then, and then in June, uh, residents have the opportunity to come forward.
So can we explain that? So, first they go through a local, um, hearing.
In April.
If they want to contest their valuations, you go through a local hearing. And then it's followed up, um, at the county level?
They would have the opportunity to come forward to, to talk to, to address the county board, uh, with their, with their concerns. And, and, uh, and at that point, uh, decisions can be made whether or not other concerns valid or not.
Which is the Board of Equalization hearings.
And that's typically in June.
June, correct.
But they have to, in order to, to come to the one in June, they have to have,
The previous one in, generally April?
Come to their local one.
April.
Whether it's a township or whether it's a city.
Yep.
If your township or city has, you know, actual more equalization need, go to help people and you need to attend those first before you can come to the county one in June. A lot of townships and cities are under an open voting, which means you can come in to our office and we'll help you through that hearing in time as well.
Thank you.
So what tonight, uh, is open for is if anyone has any feedback on the proposed levies and how we spend the money for next year. I, um, I know that part of the confusion stems from when we do get our, our tax statements that happened in the last few weeks that says the time to provide feedback on the proposed levies is now. And, um, while we're appreciative of citizens coming, if they do have questions on their valuations, we can follow that proper course in the spring. But if anyone would like to speak on the document that our administrator went through, you're more than welcome to, uh, just come up to the microphone and, uh, state your name and then any comments or questions that you may have.
Madam Chair, too, I would note, if you did have any questions with your, with your market evaluation, Nancy and her staff will be, will be here.
Correct, okay.
May I approach?
Yes, sir.
I get my relief.
And your name is?
My name is Dave Johnson. Okay. Um, my only thought here was that, when, and there's, I think there's other people in here tonight too that had the same thought that I had.
Okay.
And that was, is that this was an open meeting in which there could be discussion. There's nothing that I've ever received that I remember saying that this was only going to be a meeting on the levies and not comments on our assessments. There's nothing that I've received anyway. I mean, I know we got something back in March.
Right.
And so forth, but even back in March, it says, okay, here's your dates, here's your time that you can go in and you can contest what this assessed value is. But there's nothing here that told us, some of us have come here tonight for that expressed reason.
Okay.
And it's not to, we, we know we can't do anything on our, on our assessments here.
Right.
We know that. But we certainly should have had the right or had been told something regarding that we can know. We might as well leave because we can't even make a comment for the reason that we came here.
And I, and the reason I brought my tax statement is because it is confusing. So I, I completely understand and feel free if you have any comments, we would welcome hearing your comments. Um, but I always thought the same before I was on this board, that this was the time that I would, you know, come and,
I mean, I thought this was an open meeting where we could, we could, we could express our views.
Right, it is absolutely an open meeting that you can express your views and concerns. The, the difference is, in terms of the valuation of your property, we can't do anything about that tonight. But what we can do,
Nobody's asking you to do anything about that tonight, but I thought we would have the right to make our comments regarding that.
You, you absolutely can comment on that, I just wanted to clarify that we can't change that. But Dave, I would love to hear what your, your concern is on that and we can work to address that.
Well, my major concern, when I get these, and I get, I have property over in Becker County, I have property in, uh, uh, Wadena County, and, um, my problem is, is that when an assessment is done on our properties, what are we as citizens, as you might say? What are we supposed to do? Because there's no, in my estimation, justification. In other words, if you say, well, my tax value went up 90,000 dollars, where are you getting it from?
Right. Uh, have you, typically,
You know, and that, that does nothing on anybody's tax statements that comes to them, nothing on here. Other than the assessor comes out, he does his assessment, we get this stuff in the mail. Where's the justification?
Well, and I think we might be missing a piece because the, the statement that, the valuation statement that will come in March or April, on the back of that, and we were discussing, it gives the, the open book, or I'm not sure what township you're in.
I'm in Park.
Okay, so for Park Township, um, for them to evaluate that, or if you have questions on that, we, the avenue for that is to go to them, question where the increases came from, or why is it increased? I had a, a big increase on my farmland a couple of years ago and I went into the assessor's office and said, can you explain to me what that is? And that's the avenue for that. So on the back of that slip, it will tell you, you're allowed to ask questions on that. And if you're not satisfied with the answers that they give you, then you come to us in June at that Board of Appeals and Equalization and appeal to us why it's a, June at that Board of Appeals and Equalization and appeal to us why it's unfair. And we have, we've changed values because of the process.
And the other thing I think this board, and I think the county, needs to look at here is, there's a lot of us here, we work every day of our lives, not unlike you guys. We try to improve our properties, and every time we do, you guys are there with your hands out. Whether that's, you know, I can sit here all day long and say, you know what, a gentleman says it's not about us overspending. Oh, yeah, it is. There is a lot to be said about overspending.
Well, here's your chance to tell us.
Every county, every county in the state of Minnesota, I would dare say, has overspent themselves. It's just like there's no control. And if you need additional funds, all you need to do is assess, and there you have it.
Mr. Johnson, were there areas of this budget specifically that you noted to question?
Social services.
Okay, what part?
Well, it's pretty hefty.
It is, and.
It's one of your largest, it's one of your largest ones.
Yep, and.
You know, and that's why I bring up the fact that every one of us work, we pay our taxes. You don't have to come to me, you don't have to threaten me to pay my real estate taxes in this county.
Thank you.
And we all sit out here on our little Lake Ten, and we get, from the county, what do we get? We get our road bladed twice a year. That gets frustrating for us out there. You know, you raise taxes by 30 percent or better, that gets frustrating for us.
The township.
Yep. Well, the township hires the county to blade our roads there. But we get them bladed twice a year. And then we get tax increases of 65 percent, 30 percent, 20 percent, and we get our road bladed twice. What else does the county do for me?
Well, that's a.
I, I mean, that's a pretty broad statement, I understand that.
It is, correct. You know, and I'm sure that you have sheriff's deputies that are.
It's so frustrating for us that the taxes keep going up. And then we get information that states that, well, that's what the value of your properties are in your local area. What local area? Are you comparing us to Pelican Lake? Are you comparing us to Quamrot Lakes? We're a 92-acre lake, on record at the DNR. We're a 92-acre lake.
And Mr. Johnson, that's the nice thing about if you do have a question on the valuation, they'll be able to show you the comparables exactly where they're.
We have the comparables in our local area. We've already checked out who sold and what sold and for what amount. We have those comparables.
And that's what you can bring to them if, if you have comparables unlike what theirs are to help the process.
Anyway, I won't take any more of your time. I, I did, I did not realize we could not. And I'm not here to challenge, we're already too late as your, as your, your paperwork already states. But in March of next year, that will not happen.
Well, we look forward to talking with you then. The thing that I will also note is that all of our, I, we realize that people do work and can't always come to our board meetings, we understand that. But they're live broadcast as well, as you can observe them on the internet. And so, the thing where I'm, where I'm going with this is that you can help to understand where your dollars are going, whether it be to juvenile detention, or the sheriff's deputies at Petrolia Roads, or as you said, the social services, with a large part of that is that that pass-through dollars from the state. But we'll continue to keep in mind your concerns as we, we go through.
Don't get me wrong here. I understand. We have to pay taxes, and I will always pay them. I have a business, I pay taxes. I have a home, I pay taxes. I don't have an issue with that. But when we reach a point here where things are not equaling out in our own minds, and we're not, we're educated people, things are not adding up here.
Those are valid concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Hi, I'm Roger Minch. I think I was surprised, just like Mr. Johnson, I've got all these tax notices here, and every one of them is plus or minus up to 5 percent, except I've got one that goes up 27.7 percent. And I, it's, all that land except for 27 acres is subject to a whim, rip, conservation easement. The 27 acres that's still in CRP pays me $1,700 a year. My taxes with $160 increase are over $700. So, that's like 35 percent of my total income from the property is taxed away. And like Mr. Johnson, I, I read this thing, and it says, proposed taxes 2019, the time to provide feedback is now. And I've got the hearing date here, and now I found out that apparently I needed to look at the backside of something that I got last March to know the proper place to come to try to explain why this conservation easement property went up in value so that the taxes are up 27 percent, where, by the way, the corridor that I have right next to that, which is pure farmland, went down in value by $20,000 last year. I think that somebody forgot that this land is subject to conservation easements, and that's an easy thing to do. The government signs out there just little bitty white things like this that are easy for the assessor to miss. So, just so I know, am I stuck with this for a year, or do I still have a chance to meet someplace else in March? Where do I go and how do I properly do this?
So, if you look on the, the words underneath the proposed levies is now, is that it says it is not, or it is too late to appeal your value without going to tax court.
Poor me, yeah, I see that now.
No, 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 and I want the.
It might be a homestead, agricultural homestead.
No, no, I'm a North Dakota resident, I have no.
If you hit, hit a threshold, your, your tax rates will double it if you have 1.9 million in value, so I just want to write them that.
No, no. So, I've, I've probably lost a year because I didn't read a notice properly, but where do I go now to try to keep this from continuing or recurring for the next year?
Well, those statements will come out, but you are more than welcome. We have staff from our assessor's office here that you can talk about so that we, we start the discussion, so that, I mean, it's, it's, it's not too late to have a discussion, it is too late unfortunately to do something about it for that count, this piece.
Yeah.
But we encourage you to talk to them about that, because that was a question I had in terms of some CRP and how that was, if it was taxed at the same value or whatever, but definitely talk to them.
I did that, I'm sure, five or six years ago with this very piece of property, and somebody said, I didn't know that it was subject to this easement.
Okay, okay.
And they fixed it right away. But do I make an appointment with somebody? How do I do this?
You could probably, you could probably see, you could probably go right across the hall with him now, and he'll help you.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have any other questions on the?
No, I thought this was an awful lot of brain power for me to bother with.
Thank you, Mr. Minch.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Okay, so, I think of note, we will entertain the final budget on our meeting on Tuesday. We'll talk about that and take into consideration any concerns that we've heard. Also, any individuals that have questions on the valuation piece, well, it's too late to change it right now, feel free to contact the assessor's office to walk through any questions that you may or may not have. Any other questions?
We're not approving the final budget on Tuesday, are we? We're just talking about it?
You won't be ready?
Well, I can't. Okay, I can do it.
Are you going to be ready?
I won't be ready to get it in the packet, but I could be ready by Tuesday. I mean, I, I, I can get it ready, but I mean, I suppose the packet had to be.
The packet went out.
Yeah, and so I don't have it for that, but I can, I can have it ready for, for Tuesday.
In the, it says, budget discussion and consideration to adopt final levy in 2019 budget.
Yeah, I can have, I'll be ready, I'll get it ready.
All right.
Earlier in our meeting, we suggested that it just be next week.
Okay, that's fine.
Anything else? If not, we are adjourned.